I'm fine, how are you? Good?
This is day two.
We'd like to call the special joint city council town board meeting to order. Welcome our listening audience. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Aikerson.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to read our electronic attendance policy. After establishing that a quorum is present, we need to notify the public that a notice was received by a member of the city council in accordance with the rules established in ordinance number 16142, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the member to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting member present. Councilwoman Moore provided us 48 hours' notice, and I'm seeing no objection to her attendance, so Councilmember Moore shall be declared as present at this meeting. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection. As we did last night, I would like to mention that our longtime city treasurer, Mary Urick, passed this week, and Mary Ulrich, and we would definitely like to keep Mary and her family in our prayers. She served this city for a very long time and did a wonderful job. For those interested, services are listed, I believe they're listed in the local newspaper, as well as our city staff has access to that as well if anybody needs those. Madam Clerk.
Our first item of business is a township item. Seventeen dash three zero two is a request to approve the proposed estimated tax levy of $2,343,873, which is an estimated tax rate of .14895 for the town of the city of Peoria.
Thank you, Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Seer. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Trustee Moore?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
And now we're at regular business for the city. Seventeen dash three oh three is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to approve the estimate of taxes to be levied in the amount of $28,478,081 at a rate of 1.44246 for the city of Peoria.
Okay. Is there a motion? Councilman Grab.
Chairman, I move to approve as outlined.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item seventeen dash three zero one is a communication from the city manager and the finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file a presentation and discussion of the 2018-2019 biennial budget.
Thank you. We're going to turn this over to the city manager for the presentation, start the discussion off last night, or tonight. What we're going to attempt to do this evening is after the presentation, start to move these decisions toward a place where the city manager is comfortable in the direction that he receives from us based on his recommendations. There may be, there may be some votes on this, some of these items tonight if we need to formally determine where the majority are right now, but keep in mind, none of our votes tonight are binding votes, none of these votes are votes that are going to say that we will or won't do in the final budget. It's just giving the city manager majority direction on where we want to go from this evening. So, and then I believe, Mr. Manager, you're going to be prepared to kind of give us an outline on where the meetings are going to go after tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some slides I'd like to walk through to kind of guide the discussion, so I will put that up on the screen if we could. Thank you. So what you have in the binders in front of you is a proposed spending plan for 2018 and 2019. After deliberation with, actually months of deliberation, the period of public input that we received, what we tried to put together for you is a spending plan that took into consideration the comments and input that you had shared with us and to outline a proposal for you to consider this evening. This budget is based upon the vision statement and the mission statement that the council has just recently worked upon. We tried to align our spending plan with the resources that you as the city council had laid out as the priorities that you wanted to see the city focus on over the next several years. We have a budget that is proposed to have $206,762,000 of total sources. Our local sources grow by just about 0.6 percent. That's $106.4 million. Our property taxes grow at one-half of 1 percent, which is really, it's, we're not raising the property tax rate. The assessed value is growing in, in the city by one-half of 1 percent. That's the latest estimates we've received from the supervisor assessments, so we're really just growing with the EAV. We, the area that has probably dropped off the most is our state sources. The revenues that we are receiving from the state are dropping, I believe it's 14.2 percent, down to $44.8 million. We're seeing a larger influx of federal resources due to some grants for road fund, notably for road funding, at 82 percent higher for 2018. And then we have bonds at 6 percent, which is about, it's a sizable growth, probably 200 percent over where we were in 2017. Moving on to uses, the budget's proposed would have total spending of $199,531,116. We would have personal expenses, and sorry here, we lost a portion of that off the screen, amount to $66.1 million, or 33 percent of the total budget. Benefits are 49.1 percent of the budget, or 49.1 million at 25 percent of the budget. Contractual services are 11 percent of the budget and $21.7 million. Supplies and materials are $3.8 million, or 2 percent of the budget. And support for other agencies, which is the support that we might provide to community agencies, the civic center with the pass-through of the HRA tax dollars, or the community development block grant pass-through program that we have, amounts to $5.5 million, or about 3 percent of the total budget. And then we have a proposed capital budget of $34.5 million, and debt service payments of $18.9 million. The impact that we've seen from a revenue standpoint, and that I really want to talk about first, is, is the impact that we've seen from the state budget, the conclusion of the state budget issue. Our home rule sales taxes are going to be $500,000 less. In talking with the finance director, they're already taking the 2 percent out of the monthly payments that we're getting for home rule sales taxes from the state. That will amount to about $500,000 in less sales tax revenue from, from that issue there. And that's where the state is keeping 2 percent of the home rule sales tax. The adjustments that were made to income tax, we're seeing nearly a million dollar decrease in income taxes next year. They, they have pledged to accelerate two of our payments, so we'll get 14 payments in, in 2007, fiscal year 2017 from the, or 2018 from the state. But the problem with that is that, is that we still budget on a modified accrual basis, so you're just simply, just, well, from a cash perspective, it's going to be good for us because we're going to get that money sooner. We're going to book it when, in the months that it was technically supposed to be received. Personal property replacement tax is down 1.2 million from the $300 million reduction in the local government distributive fund from the state. So, so here, just initially, of the deficit that we have, that's $2.7 million of less revenue that we would have.
And if I can interject, I don't know if I'm on or not. While we're here, I know that Councilman Ruckregel had talked a little bit about projections as it relates to some of our major income sources. And looking at home rule sales tax, not only did we adjust it for the $500,000 that we know approximately is going to come out due to the fee, we've also had to set, we stepped back and reset the home rule sales tax projections. When we originally put the quarter percent sales tax increase in, that took effect July 1st of 2016, we were projecting about, that would generate about $3.8 million a year, or 3.6 million, I'm sorry, about, about eight, 1.8 million is what we anticipated. While that was never realized in 2016, really, we, I think we were close to about an increase of about $850,000. But before we adjusted, we were already into 2017, and so we've reduced the total home rule sales tax by nearly $2 million over what we had originally projected in 2017. Again, on the income tax, that 10 percent reduction was, is factored in as well. And PPRT, while the personal property replacement tax has been decreased for budget purposes, we were informed by the state that they're not going to attempt to recover the $896,000 that they overpaid us, so that's, that was a plus. Doesn't, doesn't improve my cash flow, but it will take off a liability.
So, looking at our local revenues, not only did we adjust there, we've attempted to adjust a number of other revenue streams to be consistent with where we've been seeing our collections coming in. And that would include the HRA tax, that would include our gambling proceeds that we get from the Riverboat Casino taxes, the utility taxes, our franchise fees, the licenses and permits revenues that we're currently receiving, fines and forfeitures, and parking revenues. So, all of those revenue streams, we've adjusted downward and then tried to, to reset those revenues based upon some of the historic collections that we've seen over the last couple of years. This next one, I apologize for the size of the font, there was a font, there was a lot to get into this slide. This is our property tax levy. We are, we are looking at our property tax levy for 2018 and 2019. We're anticipating in 2018, as I said, one-half of 1 percent property tax assessed value growth, which would raise the, the amount of the levies for the, the rate that everybody pays. The, then again, moving into 2019, the challenge here is that the growth in pension cost is crowding out any funding we would have in the general fund from property taxes, because that would have to be shifted over towards funding the cost of pensions. So, that's, that's one of the bigger issues long-term that we need to be talking about and figuring out a solution, and it's going to take the help of our legislators in Springfield to figure out some sustainable path for addressing pension funding in the long term and, and going forward. Left alone, if we continue to grow police and fire pensions at one point, or at 8 percent a year, that means we're going to have to put 1.2 million more into those pensions next year, 1.3 in 2019, 1.4 in 2020, 1.5 in 2021. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger as it's compounding on that 8 percent level. So that's, that's a, that's a big pressure point. If the council wants to keep the property tax rate constant, and you don't want to raise property taxes, what that means is that you're going to have to find other revenue streams to fund that cost, or you're going to have to look at reducing services elsewhere in the budget in order to make that up, because the pie is only so big. So this is the slide that shows, and we corrected it, Councilman Euler, for, for the projections for 2017, of where our, our revenues and where our expenses are. In 2017, we're projecting that we're going to have $92.3 million in revenue and $97.6 million in expenses, so that's a difference of about $5 million in 2017. We then have, if we just left this alone, if we didn't make any changes based on those projections, we would have the $7.9 million deficit in 2018 that we've been discussing, $10.3 million in 2019, 11, and 11.3 million in 2020 and 2021. What we attempted to do with the proposed spending plan that you have in front of you is to bring that back into alignment and to actually put some money back into our reserves and start to build back up our fund balance. So, looking at this proposed spending plan for the next four years, and really focused on the next two, in the general fund, we would have $91.5 million of expenses and $93 million of revenue. We would also in 2019 have $93.5 million of expenses and $93.9 million of revenue. So, we've tried to put that, turn that back around by making some of the cuts that, and changes to the budget that we'll talk through here this evening with you. How are we able to do this? Well, there are a number of things that we, we attempted to do with this that, that moved towards reducing services and then addressing some issues on revenue. But the first item that we know that we have to deal with is the service reductions, and we have a number of service reductions that we needed to make throughout the organization in order to make this happen. We're, we're limiting training across the board in, in a number of areas and trying to reduce the amount of money we have for training. We are recommending that we would reduce our contribution to the EDC for 2018 and then going forward in 2019. We are eliminating and reducing many software and hardware maintenance contracts. We're going to tighten our belts on our liability and workers' comp expenditures, as well as reducing OPEB contributions. We will be reducing some of our planning and neighborhood services and community development, and then shifting away from doing the private lot mowing. We will just pick up weeds and, or, we will not be mowing for weeds, we will pick up litter and garbage on private lots. This budget assumes that we would decommission one fire engine. We currently have 11 vacancies in the fire department. It would just mean not filling those positions and decommissioning one machine as we would go forward. In the police department, we're changing the office hours of the information office. The PD is changing their, their fourth shift to move towards having four, four 10-hour days, and they think from making this change, they can save $300,000 of additional expense by, by managing the fourth shift in a different manner. They're going to work through managing some of their vacant positions that they have. Currently, the police department has 13 vacant positions of police officers. Six of those, I believe, will be slated to be filled in January, and it's going to take really, you know, we, we make the hire, and then, and then for the first 13 weeks, those officers aren't even out on the streets, they'll be at, at the police training institute. Then following that, they've got to spend another, another 13 weeks in, in the car with our field training officers, but looking at how we can manage the attrition of the department with the, the current vacancy load that we have. And then in public works, we're looking at reducing some supplies and materials, looking at adjusting our snow response to just having our own temporary employees that are, and our full-time employees doing that work. We would no longer have contracted snow routes where we'd have contractors doing that work. And then we would restrict our vacant lot mowing to, to just 16 times a year instead of the 18 that we're currently doing today. Further, this budget recommends moving a considerable amount of money, I think it's almost $2 million of public works expense, out of the budget in establishing a stormwater utility. We know that we have to comply with the Federal Clean Water Act. We know that we have been told that we have to reduce the, the amount of sewage that we're discharging into the Illinois River. The cost for us to comply with that ranges from $160 to $230 million. As we've discussed this, we think that the capital construction costs can be paid through our sewer rates that we currently have today. We would just simply bond for, for that expenses, and those bonds would be paid back by our sewer fees. But the cost of operations and maintenance needs to be established, and a mechanism needs to be put in place to maintain that. In addition, we know that outside of the combined sewer area, we also have a mandate to make sure that we're managing stormwater throughout, and it's another federal mandate, that we're managing stormwater throughout the city. There's 42 square miles of the city outside of, of the combined sewer overflow area that requires drainage issues. I think we have a backlog of about 400 projects and a pretty sizable amount of, of expense that is, is there to, to address that backlog of projects that we have. All of that would be addressed with the stormwater utility fee, and all of that would be addressed with having a stormwater utility in place. The other component of this is that a, a stormwater utility would be charged to every property owner. Unlike property taxes that are charged just to those taxpaying entities, a stormwater is, a utility is just that, it is a utility. So therefore, just like we have a water utility or a sewer utility, you would pay the bill for those costs that would be incurred. So that means that, that non-for-profits, that means that tax-exempt entities, government entities, and the city of Peoria would be paying its fair share of what the cost is to manage stormwater. The proposal would be a fee charged across all properties that annualized would be $8 million. In the first year, we would initiate the billing, we would try and initiate it to start June 1st, and that would generate $4.67 million. Educating the public on this, to create the utility and to ramp up, to, in essence, create a new utility is going to take us time, and if this goes forward, we need six months to really get that up and off the ground. So that's why we've, we've laid this out for you in this, with this longer lead time. Moving on, we have a net reduction in the budget of 11 positions. To establish the stormwater utility, we would have to add 10 positions to the budget. It would be six maintenance workers in, in public works, three fiscal technicians, and a stormwater engineer to manage the program. That leaves then a net reduction of 21 positions across the organization. We would take four positions, five positions, excuse me, out of the administrative departments from the council and finance and legal and HR and information systems. There's a net reduction of one position in the, the police department that would be reduced as part of this budget. There is, by closing, or decommissioning, excuse me, a fire engine and not filling the 11 positions in the fire department, that's a reduction of 11 positions in the fire department. We would see a reduction of three positions in the emergency communications center, and then a, there's really no change in community development at this point in time, because we're, we're, we would recommend moving one position in from the police department, the code enforcement officer position, and then they had four vacancies this past year, but we're recommending in the budget that we would hire four code enforcement aides to assist with some of the environmental work that we're doing in the neighborhoods, and they would be paid for out of the community development block grant program. So, absent the stormwater utility, it's a net reduction of 21 positions. Overall, when you add the stormwater utility in, it's a net reduction of 11 positions in the budget. Capital improvements, we have a capital budget of $34.9 million that is, is listed as part of this budget, and we have some major projects that are listed in here for you and for your consideration as part of the capital budget, and I just want to touch upon a couple of those right now for you. First, I, I want to, I want to touch upon some of the major road projects. We have University from Town Line to Pioneer Parkway, that's a $5 million project. We have the, the Northmore Road, the next phase of the Northmore Road project, $5.92 million of funding. We have the initiation of Western Avenue from Adams to Lincoln, which is a $4.3 million project. We have $2.3 million in roadway infrastructure and pavement preservation projects. We have another $1.6 million for the MacArthur Bridge project. We've received a grant for the Rock Island Trail Greenway Extension. That will be coming in to help us to extend the Rock Island Trail, the bike trail. That's about $767,000. And then we have some other facility-related work that we, you know, in order to get the stormwater utility up and off the ground, there's a $2 million request to fix Dries Lane to be able to accommodate those 10 positions. There's also $1.6 million to, excuse me, $2 million to address the Central Branch HVAC system, the library, and the Lakeview Branch Libraries HVAC systems. Those are included. And then lastly, we have $2 million to implement an enterprise-wide software system that will allow us to do the billing that we need for the stormwater utility. So this budget tries to, to address- So this budget tries to address our fund balances in a number of areas. We looked at a couple of things that we wanted to try and do as part of this budget. First, by making the adjustments to the general fund, we would be able to, over, over the next two years, put two million dollars back into an obligated fund balance in the general fund. So we're working towards, trying to get back on a path towards getting back to that, to that twenty-five percent level. But there's also a couple of other areas, notably the, the garbage fund and the capital fund, where we have large amounts of monies that are owed. There's deficits in those funds, and the, and the general fund has supported those two funds from a, from a deficit perspective. So these budgets also propose that we would try and replenish some of the cash position that we have with the general fund by repaying off some of the debts that we have, both in the garbage fund and in the capital fund. And, and so the budget proposes that we do that in both of those areas. You'll also see that we are building up a pretty sizable fund balance in two thousand and nineteen in the sewer funds as we start to anticipate that first wave of projects that we're going to have to do for mandated by the federal government as part of the CSO projects. So overall, this would add seven point two million dollars to the bottom line for the city in two thousand and eighteen and then nine point two million dollars in two thousand and nineteen. And I think that was all of the, the formal presentation that I wanted to walk through with you this evening as far as the slides, and I would be happy to answer any questions that council has. We also have a fairly sizable pile of report backs that if someone has a question on, and I want to thank the staff for turning that around in a week to be able to get that to you. But, so if there are questions on any of those specific report backs as well, we'd be happy to answer any of those questions too.
That was more of a sprint than a walkthrough. Just, but, a lot of information to get through here. I would like to also say thanks to the staff for putting this big package of reports back for us. So, what we'd probably, the easiest way to go from here would be for council members on a specific item, if it was on a report back, just let us know where you're getting the information from. If it's included in our, in our two-year budget binder, if you could, just identify what page that you're referring to so we can all make sure that we're looking at the same numbers. The manager mentioned both reductions in expenses as well as increases on some revenues between the stormwater utility and the garbage, the garbage fee. So, there were other potential revenue questions that were asked that are included in a report back, so these things are all on the table. So, the floor will be open for, for questions. Again, we're trying to provide feedback to the manager to move this towards where we want to land it here in a few weeks. Councilmember Gray.
Yes, and I want to echo the mayor's words. Thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
When was the last time we did a formal study of the delivery of services for our Peoria Fire Department?
I think the, the last time might have been when we had the Matrix Study that was under, or performed in two thousand and four?
Two thousand and four.
I can't, I can't remember.
That's, that's correct.
If that was the date.
And what did that study recommend?
You know, councilman, I, I can't recall what the, what the study recommended as, as part of that study.
May I help a little bit?
Sure.
It recommended that with the expansion of the city, that we have an additional truck These were consultants we hired. And that's what the recommendation was. Now, lots happened in our city since two thousand and four. We have a lot of senior citizens living out on North Galena Road, and I'm specifically addressing the item about decommissioning a truck company. I said it many times, this will not startle you, this is not the first time I have said this. We've got hundreds of seniors living on North Galena Road. A number of years ago, under a previous council and city manager, Station House Seventeen on Galena Road was decommissioned as far as fire suppression truck company goes. Yet we've had this tremendous growth in residency for seniors in that part of the city. We have grown to the north and northwest, out into District Five, what's now District Five. We're talking Chadwick Estates, Trigger Road, Kerner Road, not much coverage there. And the recommendation tonight would seem to go in the opposite direction of what the professionals recommended in two thousand and four, in spite of all this growth that we've had. So, would you explain to the council why you feel this is a prudent decision to make from the standpoint of public safety? And then, which engine company you intend to recommend, or the chief intends to recommend that we decommission?
Well, councilman, I think that it's-
Sorry to start out with a tough question, but-
Sure. No, no, I appreciate it. I, I think that, that from, from our perspective and from the perspective that it's, it's a question of affordability that we have right now. It's, it's, do we have the resources available? And, and looking at the totality of the budget and looking at the totality of the revenues that we have available and the cost that it, that it takes to provide that service with the resources that we have, we made that decision for that perspective. What that means is that then now I need to talk with the fire chief about what is the, what's the, the amount of risk that we assume and, and risk tolerance that we have if we take out a machine out of service? And where does that risk tolerance occur? That's something we'll come back to you with an additional report back that will tell you what our recommendation would be on where we would take that machine out of service.
You made the recommendation, and you haven't had that conversation yet?
No, we've, we've had the conversation, we just haven't finalized it into a package that I could share with you and explain what it would be. So we will have that for you, we'll put that together, that'll be the next series of budget report backs that we have for you.
Yeah, and the devil will be in the details on that. I know the mayor and I have had some discussions. Oh, it's been a while. I think we, I'll speak for myself, have felt that we need a professional, another professional analysis of the delivery of firefighting service. And seems like the last time we paid a consultant to do it, we didn't pay any attention to the consultant's recommendation. So I look forward to additional details on this. Thank you, manager. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Additional questions for the staff, manager and staff?
Mayor, I do have a question regarding one of the report backs.
Okay, Councilwoman Moore.
Starting one of the report backs. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am referring to report back number, part two. And that is a report back. It would be, it doesn't have a page number on it, I apologize, but after page two, there is a, a page that shows the city of Peoria traffic citation trends. And if you turn the next page, it further breaks down those trends between citations with or without accidents, crashes. So my question pertains to the second black bold section. It's entitled "Top Five Citation Offenses," does not contain crash citations, City Council, District One, last five years. Are you there?
Can you tell the rest of us where that is?
Okay.
Okay.
So, if you look down, you, you provided a comparison as I requested, which is very good. I have to tell you first, this was an awesome report back. I mean, somebody really took the time to look at this. And what I am referencing is between October one, two thousand and twelve, and October one, two thousand and thirteen, if you drop down to the second to the last item, driving eleven to fourteen miles per hour above the limit, there were four hundred and thirty citations issued. Now, if you pull all the way back to the current time, October fourth, two thousand and sixteen, through October fourth, two thousand and seventeen, that number is now Somehow, I don't believe that there are that many folks who are not driving, who are now driving at or below the speed limit. In fact, there were some streets that I gave you, for example, that there is, there is a ton of folks doing greater than the speed limit, and I'm not just talking about a couple of miles over, I'm talking about easily five to ten or more miles over. And so my question then becomes, am, am I wrong in thinking that everybody is slowing down? Did we stop giving out citations for speeding? Did we stop giving out citations for people running stop signs? I have a gentleman right now that, that is, that lives on, on Lincoln, off the corner, right by the Lincoln Library, and I, I think he must be retired because he is able to watch a stop sign where he says people just roll through it like it's nobody's business. And we've talked about that, Mr., Chief Mitchell, but what I have said to you is that I understand that when you're trying to fight more serious crimes, it's, I'm not going to recommend someone sits there and ticket people. However, I'm trying to understand how we dropped down in five years from four hundred and thirty citations to forty-seven. Thank you.
Chief?
I, I could probably start to address that by saying two things. One, which would be, is that we have less enforcement strictly based on speeding. The focus over the last two years has been primarily on the design of traffic enforcement is to reduce accidents. So we've identified intersections that are most likely to, to have accidents, so that has been the primary focus where you see the reductions. But, but secondly, we have less officers within the traffic division to strictly write citations. That is their primary function, and their secondary function is to respond to traffic collisions. So it's kind of a two-part reduction. It's not that we have less speeding violators in the city.
So, we are not concerned with the safety issue that is created when folks are speeding?
We are. We have to balance, we have to balance the request to reduce speeding in certain sections, but we, we want to base it on what we know, and that is that we know that we have identified areas that we have to change the behavior because that is where we're seeing the most accidents. So to reduce injuries to, to our community, we have to enforce at the intersections where most likely we are to have accidents. Doesn't mean we do not respond to neighborhood concerns of speeding in residential areas or school zones, we, we still have to manage that as well, but that's why we see the reduction that what we see.
I can appreciate your response, and I thank you for that. However, it is not acceptable that we are allowing folks speeding through residential areas. We cannot afford also the traffic calming that may require folks to slow down and go over a hump, for example, or to go around a, a small island that I've seen in some parts of other districts. And so help me understand what I am to say to my district folk who are concerned on a daily basis that their children will be run over because nobody's monitoring the speed. They have asked me then to remove the speed limit sign. Why even have it there when we're not going to enforce it? So help me understand what I am to say.
Councilmember Moore, my, my answer to that would be that we are trying to enforce traffic, and, traffic concerns in every district of the city, not one more than the other. The idea is that we open up traffic projects, traffic enforcement projects based upon where we're receiving the complaints. It's no different than where, where we deploy our resources is based upon where we see the issues and concerns. So we are glad, and we consistently add new traffic enforcement projects every day where the officers will go out and are assigned to do enforcement based upon the number of complaints we get. So we currently respond to school zones because we hear that every morning, that, that our children will be hit going to school. So we address that the best we can, and I, so I guess my response would be is that we will open yet more enforcement patrols in, in District One and specifically in the areas that you're talking about.
So, I thank you for your answer. I will end by saying you, you've indicated that you respond more frequently to where you receive complaints. What is the, the proper procedure for me to disseminate to my district where they should make those complaints? I'm getting them directly myself. I would like to share that opportunity for other people to get them as well, and perhaps that will open up more opportunities for us to engage the drivers in the first district.
Well, there's, there's a number of ways. They can continue to work through your, your office, and they can, obviously, they could respond to us through social media, to pick up the phone, they could call a non-emergency number. And then what would happen is that, once we receive that, we, we would then direct our officers to enforce in those specific areas. And again, we have a, a long list of, of intersections and a long list of residential streets, including every school zone in the city that we're trying to enforce.
Thank you, sir. Would you please remind the public of that non-emergency number to call?
That number's six seven three four five two one. They can also reach us by email as well, or they can reach their district officer, residential officer. All of those officers are available to them. And, and again, we would encourage them to give us that information and to voice their concerns so we're more aware of which intersections. And then what we would also like to do too is, is that we will respond to those areas, we will monitor those areas for amount of traffic and, and do a, a speed study, if we will, while we do the enforcement. And then typically, what we would come back to in two or three weeks and enforce that same stretch of road again and get a better sense of, did it change behavior or not?
Thank you so much, Chief. I really appreciate you taking the time to give your response. Mrs. City Manager, once again, I'd like to applaud the, the detail that was in this report back on the questions that I provided you. And there are some questions that I will circle back to you a little later on, but that was the one that was most glaring that I thought I needed to address tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, while you're still up here, I wanted to make sure I'm looking in the right place with a lot of these different charts in front of us. But on, on the revenue by source, for two eighteen and two nineteen, I'm showing, this is on page twenty-eight in the binder, fines and forfeiture, traffic in court. Is, is that, Mr. Manager, the specific location that we would find, find where the revenues are being generated through police enforcement on traffic? Am I looking in the right spot there? So, we don't see anything previous to sixteen. My assumption is those numbers used to be higher, but I, I don't have that budget book with me, but we're showing three hundred and five thousand last year. We're looking at about five hundred and twenty thousand this year, and then, and then, well, actually, the estimated actual is three-ten. And then we're right in that vicinity, three-thirteen, three-sixteen for eighteen and nineteen. So, Chief, and I, and I totally, you don't need to repeat what you just said to Councilwoman Moore. I understand that we're, we're putting a lot of focus in some of these other areas that traffic folks are working on, but in general, we're seeing a serious trend downward in traffic enforcement. Am I right? In terms of revenues?
In terms of revenue, yes, sir.
Right. So maybe that wasn't right to say in traffic enforcement, but in revenue. So, maybe that wasn't right to say in traffic enforcement, but in revenues. Is that, is that something that you see in, in other communities? That trend? Is that something that's unique to Peoria? I mean, I, I would say that I concur with Councilwoman Moore that that's one of the most frequent things that I hear about are speeding and red light running. I think, I think this community is, I've never seen people run red lights like they do around here. And I know that's a tough one to enforce too because it's hard sometimes for one officer to, to do that because he has to, he or she has to cross traffic and so on. My first question was, is this a pattern that we're experiencing in other communities? Is this just, you know, there's a lot of speculation on why that may be. Is that happening here? And if so, why is that, in your opinion? And then, secondly, what can we do to potentially make our community safer for motorists and pedestrians? And, I mean, the ideal situation would be that you didn't have to write traffic violations because it was such a safe community, but it's a revenue stream to the city, and it's, it's something that I think is glaringly short on. I'll probably get a speeding ticket on my way home tonight. It'll be my own fault. But, do you understand my, my questions here?
I think so. To, to address your first one, Mayor, is that, that it is, it is the trend that I'm aware of across the country, and, and I don't know how much time we have to address every issue that would be involved in this, but a lot of what you see across the country is about less enforcement, and that is, that is the sentiment of the country. Not necessarily, it's not a Peoria thing, and it's definitely not a Central Illinois thing. We're seeing trends in, in different types of enforcement from, from the, the number of people that, that are sent to jail to the number of tickets, and this is not specific to us. A couple of years ago, there was a, a law that stayed, I think it was two years ago now, about the banning of quotas. Now, Peoria never operated under a quota system, but we always were able to have performance measures in place that allowed for us to say that, hey, get out there and do your job, which is going to be where you're going to write tickets. But the, but when you, you see the, the Ferguson effect, that is real. It is where, where, that across the country, law enforcement is, is less engaged in certain activities, and one of them is, is writing citations. Doesn't mean that they look the other way, it's just a different type of enforcement. The focus has been in the last few years about more education, changing behavior through education, as opposed to trying to, to, to arrest or cite your way out of a situation, which is, which we know is not going to be the case. So, the balance comes down to, to this, Mayor, is that we have to continue to find that right balance between writing citations and, and education, and maybe it's the same thing, but it's just, a part of it too is a matter of resources when, when we spend a lot of time trying to change behavior so we have less injured people in our society because they're, they're getting hurt every day in accidents throughout the city. If the focus is for us to reduce that, then we need to be at those intersections as opposed to running radar on a side road. It's, it's trying to find that balance. We're not trying to make an excuse for it, that is just the reality of trying to balance this thing out. So, so what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing is that, from, from Councilwoman Moore, is that we will add her, her streets and, and neighborhood concerns that she has to our enforcement pieces, and we will specifically address those moving forward, but in the meantime, we'll still continue to work the intersections to reduce the, the number of people that are hurt here on a daily basis. So, it's, it's just a balance.
I appreciate that answer, and just for clarification on my part of the question, and I totally support, as I said, Councilwoman Moore's focus in her district. In general, I would defer to the district council people in terms of the, you know, what they feel needs to be better enforced in their districts, although, like the rest of us, I drive throughout the whole city, and I don't, I don't think that there's any one area of the city that's better or worse when it comes to some of these violations. So, I just don't want it, I don't want anybody to think that the only place we're going to be watching for speeding and everything else is in the first district when it's happening all over the city. I know that's not what you meant.
Right. No, this is across the board. This is across the board. We hear in every district, the, the same thing. Every neighborhood association meeting I go to, the very same concerns, and, and that's been the same for a number of years, not this year or last year. It's been that way throughout my entire career.
You know, and, and I won't belabor the point because I think I made it, but when it comes to that education piece that you say, you know, we either have to do it, you know, with a, with a stick or with the carrot, and I guess the carrot's the education piece, how do, how do you perceive our community is, is doing in that regard? Because I don't, I don't see a whole lot of, I don't see a whole lot being accomplished by any education that might be going on out there.
Right. There's, and, and I think there's, some are going to get the message, some of it, when you put, when you put different, and I use the curfew violation sign that we used to put out, that is a behavior change. A lot of people that drive on particularly Knoxville Avenue have a tendency to not pay attention to their speed, and I see it every morning when I'm coming to work, and, and it's not, the intent is to drive 10 over, that is just what they do. So, sometimes you can educate them through having the flashing signs, just a reminder, watch your speed. And there's others in this community that simply need a ticket. So, it, it's, it's a little bit of each, but I think it has to be a balance.
Thank you for that. I have Councilwoman Aikerson and then Council, Councilman Seer.
Thank you, and I really appreciate all the work the staff has done, and I appreciate all the work that Councilwoman Moore made, putting together the questions and then the, the really thorough answers that she was given. I appreciate it. In, in, you know, this kind of seems like we're going kind of off topic with this speed issue, but it's something that I care very much about, so I just wanted to make a couple comments, and I thought maybe we could get Director Reese up to the table. It is well-known currently in the traffic engineering community that roads, especially here in Peoria, the kind of community we have been, roads were designed for speed. So, the travel lane widths are at least 12 feet across from center line to the edge, and in many places in our residential neighborhoods, they're wider than 12. And the reason why 12 feet is important is that is the standard that the federal highway uses on their freeways. So, essentially, what we see in Peoria is, we see wide roads, and the, Chief of Police just said, people don't necessarily mean to speed, but we make it super easy for our motorists to speed. So, we are essentially creating the conditions that we're all describing that we don't like, and the citizens want to see the police officers enforce the speed limit signs, but all the literature, all the evidence shows, they can't be every place to reduce and enforce the speed limit signs. So, what communities are doing across the country where this is really something that they care about, they're making efforts to re, to create the friction on the streets that makes it, you know, more likely that people will go slow. And we, when the young, the little boy from Lincoln School was killed going to school, I met with Mike Rogers and Director Reese, and he was the assistant at the time, and it, was it Monroe that we? Yeah. So, we measured the street, and then the staff came and restripped the edges. And we could do that around the schools, and I don't know exactly what the cost is, but we don't typically do that in Peoria. And there's a, there is one glaring example around Thomas Jefferson, that that, from the center line to the edge of the road, I think it's probably 18 feet.
At least.
Is that right?
At, at least.
Because, and we got off, you know, I remember requesting that an intern go around and measure and bring back a recommendation so we could at least do striping, and that kind of fell apart. I don't know what really happened on that. But, as a council, if we tell, you know, the engineering staffs, we want to see the roads designed for safety in this respect, because what they've been told previous to this is just, we want cars to get without interruption as fast as they can and as safe as they can. But, you know, I know that I drove way too fast down here tonight on Jefferson, and it's because you can. It's just a straightaway, and I think that the travel lane widths are probably 14, 16 feet, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a state route.
So, I, I think it's a kind of a simple solution. We just have to, you know, tell the, our staff that that's what we want to see happen, and when they can, restripe the streets. Because even that, just that right-hand white stripe gives people the illusion they have 10 feet to travel, and the two feet makes a big difference. And if, if you would like to make any comments, I'd love to hear it.
I, I just say we've been trying, council adopted a complete streets policy, and we've been trying to tackle it throughout the year and, and address streets, and we do see that as we narrow streets up, people do slow down. There definitely is a learning curve to it. There's, the folks in Peoria are used to driving fast. I mean, we've had 50 years of road design of making the cars drive as fast as they can, so we're trying to combat that to some degree. But, an example would be University Street. That was, that's narrowed down to 10-foot lanes on that, and, and so that's, we're seeing some success in slowing down the traffic on that. Our, our biggest hurdle at this point is funding sources, a, a lot of times, and when we have federal funds or state funds in a project, the Department of Transportation gets to pick the design criteria, and IDOT is very good at moving cars. I mean, that's their, that's their main business, that's what they focus on, and we've really been having discussions with them on how we address urban areas and how we look at how pedestrian move, how the pedestrian plays in with the roadway, and how we, we don't interfere with car movement, but we slow them down. And, and a lot of times when people are speeding, they're not getting anywhere any faster in the scheme of things. It, it's just that, that feeling that, that people have.
And then I just have one other suggestion. I just made a kind of casual comment to the city manager, well, why don't we get some red light cameras? Because red light cameras are not, you know, they're not human, they're just recording when a car goes too fast, so you would, you would avoid the, you know, people complaining that they're being profiled and stopped, et cetera. But he said that it's against state law to put red light cameras in Peoria, so I would recommend that we encourage our state representatives for our next, I'd put it on the list, the city of Peoria wants some red light cameras, or maybe we don't, but perhaps we could have a discussion about how we can, and maybe the mayor knows something I don't, is it not possible?
No, it's, you're right. Legislatively, we can't. When the red light cameras first were allowed outside, many times the state legislature allows things in Chicago that they don't allow in the rest of the state or vice versa. We went down after, after they were allowed in Chicago and lobbied to have them at certain intersections in the community. And that's, that's been maybe five years ago, four or five years ago, and at that time, our own legislators were not supportive of what we wanted to do because some of them looked at this as, it was two things. Number one, it was cameras were big brother, you know, and the other part was they, they thought that we would just use that as a revenue stream and it wouldn't be appropriate. And, you know, similar to our discussion with the chief on fining people for traffic violations, you know, hopefully we get to a point where they don't write any tickets because the community's so safe. That's really the theory with the red light cameras is, people get trained, hey, don't run red lights in Peoria. And so, we couldn't convince our legislators that we, we weren't looking at this as a revenue stream, we wanted to make our community safer. So, I, you know, we have, full disclosure, we have new, new representatives right now that may look at this a little bit differently. Chicago's still having some issues with their red cameras, but that's, red light cameras, but that's for other reasons. But I, I think hopefully the majority of the council would be supportive of that, and I'd be glad to pick it up again too. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Seer was up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for Chief Mitchell. Reading the, and I don't want to beat a dead horse tonight, I already had two or three questions about that, but reading the audit, financial audit for 2016 and looking at trends, we, last, over the last 10 years, I've noticed that we are 10% less staff-wise for our police officers, we have 10% less staff, and also 75% less citations in the trend, like Councilwoman Moore was saying. My question to you is, before my time here on the council, I remember reading requirement for police officers at their annual review, they had to, every month, have a certain amount of citation. Does that still exist as a requirement for police officers?
No, sir.
Has it been replaced by, by other things, or is that, did the, the way our police officers get raises, pay raises, is it's public knowledge that how they get, how the annual review goes, and if, if, you know, citation are not part of that anymore, what's, it's part of review, your annual review?
The pay raises are not tied to performance. In years past, several contracts back, I believe, it's been a long time since it was attached that way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Only question I have for, thank you, Chief. I've got a few questions for our city manager. On the HRA tax, we have a hotel downtown that's been closed, hopefully scheduled to open soon. Are they part of your projecting for 2018 and 19, and can you give us an update on the, the hotel?
We did not build in any projections into the projections for the Four Points opening up. It's my understanding that they're still shooting for the first quarter of the year to be open. You know, the construction crews are still out working. I would actually defer to the mayor. I think the mayor just recently did a walkthrough, if there's anything else that I could add there on that front, but I think that it's still looking like probably March, I think, is what they're, they're shooting for sometime in that, that time.
I had an opportunity to walk through with Assistant City Manager for Economic Development, Mr. Seti, about a month ago, and that was the approximate timeline, first quarter. I, I think probably, and we, everybody can see as they drive by that there's a lot of work going on down there, but we got to see the inside too, and that's coming along. I think more from the revenue standpoint, which Councilman Seer was, was talking about, you know, what we're anticipating once they, if they do get open, what, what do we anticipate that looking like?
Well, you know, I think we could certainly try and give you some estimates and, and put that together for you as a report back in terms of what the, the revenues would be. I'd hate to try and calculate something off the, off the fly right now, but we can do that and, and report back to you. And it, and we'll, and we'll just make the assumption a new hotel and, and what the, what that, that usual first year is, and eventually they, they tend to grow over time and then stabilize, so we'll, we'll get you some, some estimates on that and, and put that together for you.
Okay. Thank you. Another question on staffing, the voluntary separation that we're offering right now? Any takers?
So far, we've had, I believe, five people that have, have signed the paperwork to retire, so we are, the, the window is open. You know, we'll, we'll get a full and more detailed report back to you once that window closes and, and what that impact might be, but initially, we've had five so far.
Okay. Another question on the fund balance. Your report here shows that we're about 10, a little bit over $10 million, and we're supposed to be on page four of our audit. It costs, it talks about the rules that we have. We're supposed to be at 25%, I believe, of our operating, operating budget. So, we're a long way. I see, reading your notes, that we're looking the next four years at making additional $3 million.
Correct.
But my concern is when you read the rules that, in the audit, we're supposed to have a five-year plan. Am I correct, and did I read that correctly?
Yes. We, we have a five-year plan for us to move to try and, and rebuild the general fund, unobligated general fund balance by 15% of, of current expenditures. 15% of, of current expenditures, I'm not sure that we could do it in, in the general fund without some sizable operating expenditure reductions. And instead of, instead of talking about one engine company, we might be having to talk about three. If we were talking about managing vacancies in the police department, we would be talking about fewer police officers. We would be talking about probably reducing code enforcement down to, you know, a handful of, of employees from, from the proposed budget that we have today. So, it would be a sizable change. If we went to, to do that, and we'd be happy to give you a report back of what that would look like in terms of, based on the current revenues, what that is, and what, what type of expenditure reductions we would have to make to get to that point, we could do that.
One of my concern on this subject was, in a couple meetings I had with Mr. Scroggins, he explained to me, we had subsidies that we, for a lot of different charities. The numbers I was looking at was $1.5 million in subsidies. Some are contractuals. We have contracts with some of these people, some we don't. If you look at this list of $1.5 million, that possibly can be cut off, especially donations that, no, I mean, they're all great charities, but, I mean, we're spending taxpayers' dollars here.
We can, we can break out the, the list of, of what we have identified as far as support to other agencies and how that flows in the budget. You have, for example, there's, there's $1.3 million, I think, in, in the Community Development Block Grant, which funds our housing programs, and it's the, the Chodo program that we have. In the general fund, you know, that's our contribution to March Madness. That includes the, our participation in the Heartland Water Resources Council. It's the funding for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's, you know, and how we roll out some of the HRA tax dollars. We'll, we'll break out a more detailed list of all of those, those subsidies that we're providing to other entities that we can share with you. It's our, our participation in the Downtown Development Corporation, our contribution. There's, there's a number of other ones that we can lay out for you. So, we'll, we'll put that together for you.
Thank you. Last question. Can you explain to us this, 2018, our oldest TIF program will be done. I don't see anywhere in these reports where it helps us. I don't understand why it doesn't help us when we, when one, the oldest TIF program ends up, or is finished. How come it doesn't help us in our revenues?
Well, when we, and I'll look to Director Scroggins, I think we have a, the Central Business District TIF is coming off in 2021, and then the North Side TIF is coming off in 2020, or 2019. But the, the, in 2014, we saw the conclusion of the South Town TIF. And when that concluded, we saw that, that all taxing bodies received an influx of about $2.4 million, I believe it was, of, of additional revenue that went into, to all the taxing bodies once the TIF concluded. So, that was, that was a, a success. I mean, we grew the, the base EAV was somewhere in the area of $3 million, and, and we grew it to almost $30 million as far as the, the, the EAV of, of the South Town TIF, and which is what TIF is intended to do. It's, it's intended, your whole, we, as the city, hold on to the increment to finance the redevelopment of a certain area, and then that incremental property tax is used to finance that redevelopment, or the redevelopment area. And then, once the TIF concludes, then the property taxes go on to, the increment is then distributed in future years to all the other taxing bodies.
I believe our next TIF would expire, it'd be the North Side PMP TIF, and then Midtown TIF.
Yeah.
We had extended the Central Business District TIF, so I think it's like 2022 is the last year, 2021. And the Downtown Conservation TIF is like 2035. Once those TIFs are completed, the full increment now goes into the, the total property tax calculation. So, as the manager stated, when South Town closed, it was about $2.6 million. Of that $2.6 million, the schools would have realized 60% of that the next year, so they ended up with about 1.5. We got about 10%. So, it did increase our property taxes, and that was factored in with the growth in EAV for that year.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all your work, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have Councilwoman Jensen up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, City Manager and Assistant City Manager Seti, if you're out there, and everyone else, I appreciate all your help and all your work on this. I guess first, I have a couple of questions about the reduction in force plan that was in your slides. I guess, and I know there were some questions already about the proposed reductions in the fire department, but I have some follow-up questions as well. I guess, when you look at this, I'm wondering why it just appears so lopsided. I mean, there's 11 people being laid off in the fire department, and only one or two in all the other departments, or zero? Is that right?
There's, there's no layoffs in the fire department, but...
You're just not filling...
Not filling the current vacant positions.
Okay. It still seems a bit lopsided.
The reason is that when you run a 24/7 shift, there's, for a machine, you staff it with three individuals, and then you have the additional time to cover. It requires 11 to, to fund, fully staff a machine. And so, those 11 positions would be slated for elimination, and then that would allow us to then decommission a machine.
Okay. And then, my other question is, there a way to save just as much money in the fire department without decommissioning an engine?
Are there ways? We could, we could certainly look at, are there other ways? I think that, that from the, my recommendation to you is to close a machine down at this point in time. I think that much of what they do is, is tied up in the 19 pieces of equipment that they, they have and that are out on the street every day, and I think that's part of it. So, there's really, we could certainly look at, at the impact that if we went to hazmat, or if we looked at, which generates revenue for us, we could look at inspections, which generates revenue for us, but it's not going to have a significant amount of, of cost savings that we would have there. We could look at specialty units that we have, and, you know, do we really need to have the dive team and the costs that are associated with that? We can provide a report back on that to see if there are other areas that we could look at, at saving, or making some adjustments, and provide that back to you as well.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. And, and you did mention some of the, some revenue generating ideas. I know that there are some others that, some people have been talking about, and, and I'd like to know if the, if you're considering those, or if you could report back on the possibility of charging non-residents when the firefighters have to serve them in a collision, which basically would be passed off probably to the insurance companies. I know we don't charge for that. And I think there's a number of additional things. I know there's been discussion, I think it's even been maybe reported in the papers about billing healthcare facilities for the calls that the fire department makes to those facilities. So, I would like a report back on that, as well as some other revenue generating ideas. I think you, you mentioned that hazmat inspections, maybe raising those fees, or becoming up to date on those. I, I believe we're, I'm being told that we may be behind on those. And of course, I understand that could require more staff, but I'd like a report back on that. What else? I had some other follow-up questions here. And then I, my understanding from the questions that Councilman Grab asked, maybe at our next, within the week, you're going to give us a report back on your recommendations as to where that engine will be located? With regard, I've got some questions about the storm water utility. I know there was a slide about it, it was, it was a little bit general, but do you know how much approximately the utility fee will be per resident?
We proposed, oh, per resident?
Per household?
Household? I'll, I'll turn over to, to Director Reese to kind of talk about the calculations that we've been working on in that front.
Thank you. On the stormwater utility, we worked through it with a One Water Committee back in 2014, and kind of how a utility would look if we implemented one. And basically, through them, we came up with equivalent, a billing unit of 1,000 square feet of impervious area. So, we have aerial photos of the entire city, and we're able to, through GIS, calculate how much each property has of impervious area. And the average house in Peoria is 2,600 square foot worth of impervious area. So, we take that, divide it by 1,000 square foot, and we get a 2.6 billing unit. And then, we were recommending the billing unit be $3 per billing unit to start off with, which would generate, it would be an average bill of around $8 a month per household or property. And that varies, depends on, because it's all based off your consumption. It's set up as a utility, and it's based off your use, just like your, your electricity or your water or your sanitary sewer bill is. So, if you have more impervious area, you use the system more, and you pay more each month.
For clarification for the citizens, can you clarify, it's my understanding this is not going to cover any CSO costs if we're going to be required to reach that solution or resolution with the federal government?
At this point, the recommendation is that CSO costs are not built in at this time. Eventually, there's some, I guess I should say there are some portions of it that would go towards CSO. The, the six maintenance workers that are built in as part of this would be a, a third shift sweeping the streets once a month throughout the entire city. That, whenever we come to a CSO conclusion, that'll be part of our maintenance plan, is keeping trash out of the system. And so, that is one thing that, that would contribute, more on the operations side for CSO maintenance. But at this point in time, the, the funds aren't identified necessarily for capital projects for CSO, but we do have, our proposal is to combine these with our existing sewer funds and run it out of an enterprise fund, which eventually would pay for the CSO project.
Okay. So, as a follow-up, if we do reach a settlement with the federal government on the CSO, or eventually if we're required to resolve that issue and to come up with the, and pay for the multimillion-dollar plan to correct that problem, we will have to come back and increase the sewer utility fee?
Yes. At a certain point, it'll be, I mean, we'll come back with some policy recommendations for council. And, I mean, it could be this sewer utility fee, it can be sewer fees that we can increase, or any other fees that, that address the situation. But right now, the stormwater utility is not generating enough to cover what we anticipate the CSO costing us in the future.
Okay. So, this proposal for the sewer utility fee is really to cover what our current and projected costs are to manage our current sewer utility issues, not the CSO?
This covers, this, this is intended to cover the startup of the utility that will, will begin to deal with the CSO issues. There are still CS, if, for us to, to, to bond for 160 to 230 million dollars over the next 18 years is going to be probably a $10 million a year program to $12 million a year bonding program, just to make that happen, if not more, because we've got an accelerated ramp in the first six years of what we have to accomplish. So, it's going, there's going to be some pretty significant expenditures that we're going to have to make to comply with the Clean Water Act. So, what we, but we also know that we have issues right now that we're paying for in the general fund, and that we also are incurring for drainage issues that we're not addressing. So, this was an intent to get it started and to start the process so that we could pull some of those costs out of the general fund, pay for it with a dedicated utility source, and begin the process of preparing for what's coming down the pipe.
Okay. But I just want to be clear for the public, this, so they understand, this proposal isn't to cover the CSO, except maybe the initial cost to prepare to do what we will have to do when we reach a solution for the CSO.
The, the costs to cover the CSO are going to be sizable for our community for the next 18 years.
And we will have to come back and...
Probably year after year, and build a schedule to continue to raise sewer rates, and probably look at the stormwater utility to cover some of those costs.
And so, this proposal is to cover what our current drainage and sewer fees are?
And to build up some initial, additional reserves so that we can start to do some of that CSO work. Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Jensen, can I ask you a question on this, on that topic, before you go to your next one?
Sure.
Just on this, on this line, what, what would you anticipate being the time that we would have to bring in additional, whether, whether it's additional stormwater utility, whether it's, you know, another portion? How far is this proposed raise going to get us before that next bump that Councilman Jensen's talking about?
We're looking at, at a scheduled increase, I mean, it all depends on when the hammer falls for the CSO. I mean, you could potentially see a dollar a year on each residential unit to ramp up to $5. Our, when we worked through One Water Committee, our original proposal was $5 per billing unit, which would be an average bill of $13 a month for the house, per household. And that would generate, in the neighborhood of $13 million, with at least $5 million of that dedicated solely to capital CSO expenses.
So, is that projected $8 on average? Is that going to be for '18? Is that going to be '18 and '19? We're not looking at another, probably another increase till after that? That's what I'm kind of asking, is, is that going to, is that going to get this, you're talking about getting that started, and I'm wondering how long this is going to last before it goes up?
'18 and '19, and then I think we'd have to start to look at a fee increase in 2020. Or we would have to build it in when we adopt it, if you adopt it.
Looking at this being the startup for this to your budget cycle? Okay. Thank you, Councilman Jensen.
Oh, you're welcome. As a, as a follow-up to the question that was asked about the early retirement incentive, you advised that five people so far have signed up. Are those people that, whose positions will have to be replaced with a new employee?
There are, there are some that we will have to fill. And, and just by the nature of the, the bench that we have, some of those will have to be filled. Others may not, and we'll have to, to see how that rolls out.
And remind us of the date that it closed, that they have to notify you by?
November 15th.
Okay. Do you anticipate, based on responses, an estimate of how many more may take it?
Well, five so far. I, I, at this point, I think I said I would, I would be happy if we had 15, and we'll see if, if there's any more that are expressing any interest in, in taking the program. But as of right now, that's, that, that's what I, that's the known fact that I have. So, we'd be happy to keep you posted as things are going along.
Okay. And then you'll give us an, an estimate amount of the money that we'll save?
Correct.
Hang on, let me check my notes here, just a second. I have a few follow-up questions on the report back, on a, on a couple of the report backs. One on the, on the motor vehicle fee. I'm wondering, one of the, the questions that I had was whether or not we could, if we were to implement such a fee, whether we could charge out-of-town non-residents who work in the city every day and use our roads every day, who work here on a full-time basis, and whether they could be charged a motor vehicle fee? And I don't believe your report covers that. So, I'd like some information on that, and if there's a potential for raising revenue that way. Also, I'm wondering about what other municipalities do. I see your report back includes a reduction for senior citizens. Is, is that because that's what other municipalities do, or did, that was just something...
No, I think as we, as we were looking at it, we were, we're trying to come up with an estimate, and, and we started to research what others were doing, and they had a senior citizen discount, so we built that in.
Did any of those municipalities, when you were doing your follow-up, have reduced fees or exceptions for people that are... Did any of those municipalities, when you were doing your follow-up, have reduced fees or exceptions for people that are low, could prove that they were low income or at a certain income level?
I did not see, and I'll go back and look, but at the, at the communities that we looked at, if they had a low income exemption. I think it was just simply there was the senior exemption, but not a low income. But I'll look, we could do the research again, and we'll give you the list of communities, they're mostly Chicago suburbs that we have and the city.
And I know there's probably not a majority that wanna do this at this point, but I think it's important. I know when we discussed it, the last budget cycle, I think that was a concern that Councilwoman Moore raised, and I share that concern. So, I think if we were to implement it, we should have that mechanism or ability to reduce the fee for someone that is low income. And I haven't had time to, to go through all of the report backs, so since we got a lot of this information last night, and we had a council meeting last night too, so if we have additional questions, just send you an email or call you. Okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilman Rigganbach and then Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, talking about the position changes on page six of the slides from tonight's presentation, perhaps you already mentioned this, but how many of those positions, I know the 11 in the fire department are vacant now, how many of the other positions are vacant and how many would actually be layoffs?
Question.
And if you didn't...
I think there would be, one, two, three, four, five. I think we have nine vacant positions that are included in this list, plus the 11 vacant firefighter positions. I think we had layoffs, direct layoffs of four. So, I may be counting the number of vacancies wrong, so I apologize.
All right, thank you. And at this point, with the voluntary separation, there's no way of knowing if any of those could be leveraged. But obviously, that will be something we'll wanna keep a handle on as, as that process goes on. I also had some questions on the stormwater utility and to kind of follow up with a couple thoughts from Councilwoman Jensen. In the, in the budget binder on page 10, it's, it's pretty clear here that the One Water Committee, that the recommendation that they brought forward does not include any CSO expenses. And I think it's important for our citizens to understand the magnitude of our stormwater problem, regardless or separate from the CSO. If I understand correctly, Director Reese, I don't know if maybe you wanna jump in here, our, our list of stormwater projects totals around 400?
That's our backlog currently that we have of projects that are, that we're not able to get to each year.
And the general fund is subsidizing these by 2.5 million, was that the number?
I was thinking it was about 1.2 million. We've got about $2 million in operation expenses, and then about 1, 1.2 million worth of capital.
So, by instituting this, and maybe it would be helpful to have a handle in a report back on the, the cost of those 400, the backlog projects, because if we're gonna be raising $8 million a year, we can replenish the, the general fund with two of that. So, to really get a understanding on the timetable for addressing those, I think that would be a useful thing. I think we've seen when we raised fees to pay for road improvement projects that our, our citizens are willing to pay for something if they know what they're getting. We've been very clear with the revenues that have gone for road improvements to make sure that the projects that we're working on, the revenue sources that pay for those are, are clear to the residents. That's why, as crazy as it sounds, the garbage fee increase, I think it's important for people to realize that's the cost of this service, and that's, that's what you're paying. And as I talk to people, people, that, that's important to know. And we've got an RFP out there right now, so it'll be nice to see how, how that comes in. Competition is always good. But I really think the stormwater utility is something that we need to make sure that we're clear that this is addressing a problem that hasn't been addressed appropriately in years past, that we've been piecemealing this with our general fund dollars, but now we're gonna have a dedicated source. And these stormwater issues clearly go through the whole city. This isn't just CSO territory-related issues. So, I think it would be good for us to be able to present that to ourselves, first of all, but, but to our constituents that, that, yeah, this is, it's gonna be eight bucks a month hypothetically, based on the information, but this is what you're gonna get for it, and these are the problems that will be alleviated. So, I think that's a report back that needs a little, some serious meat on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, City Manager, and the complete staff for not only putting these reports back in such great form, but getting them back so timely. They're, they're great reading as they come out, and a lot of good information in there. And a couple of thoughts and then a couple of questions. One, I appreciate the work on the fund balance and moving in a direction of starting to fill that again. As you know, that's been one of my big pushes. And over the past couple of years, actually, not past couple of years, it's been longer than that, we've kinda dipped into that. And I'm often reminded around this council that, hmm, you're not the longest one around here. There's, we, there's some of us that have been around here longer, and there's some of us that are around here newer. So, I kinda fall in that middle. But one thing I know is, if we don't correct something or take the action to do it, we just keep repeating the same old, same old. When I look at those credit, when I look at those fund balance decreases over the years, and we're talking with the public, and they say you're providing this amount of service level, we really aren't, because we're living on our credit cards and we're swiping that credit card because of decisions maybe that we should have thought about or done some things differently in the past. And we are where we are today. We wouldn't tell our friends to live on their credit cards for a couple of years, and we're seeing where we are in the fund balances. And it's gonna take us, I would agree with what you told Councilmembers here, a lot more than five years to remedy that back up to the numbers it gets. So, in that vein, what I'd ask is, as we get back some information for our next budget hearing, can we not only look at two years, but where those decisions bring us in five and 10 years? Because that, that I think is something that maybe will help us to sort of be able to really format the question. Because I think our job around here as council, and I, I brought something with me tonight, just as I was, before this meeting, going through some of these again. These are 900 out of 1,200 individual surveys that I got back from the citizens of Peoria who live in Peoria, who individually wrote about what was important to them. And police is, and is one of the big things. They, they talk about their roads, they, they have a lot of requests. One of the requests is in there is that we live within our budget, that we manage the system we have. And I think that we've gotta, we've gotta be fairly honest, because we're gonna have some tough decisions around here, that living on the credit card days has got to be over, and it's not gotten us anywhere. Unless you know any silver bullets, I don't think that, that I know that there are any silver bullets that are gonna change it. It's gonna take some hard work. Question two, with that, if we're looking at a $13.50 a household stormwater fee, and if we take that times 12 months, and if we take the average tax bill of $1,200, that's really, in essence, another 13 and a half percent of what they sort of give to the city. I know the tax bill's larger that they have to pay, and we, we get a really small piece of that for what services we provide. But that is gonna be something that I think we've gotta talk about in the future, because we are gonna have some additional future cost to our citizens. So, I think as we're managing this budget, and I, I think that you may, if you've got some future costs like that, we oughta include them somewhere in some side notes so that we remember that there are gonna be some additional costs there too. And then just another question on the forecasting, and I appreciate this work on the forecasting, because I, this is some, some great numbers and it helps us put through. Can you come back with a report on how this mirrors up with our other governmental entities? Their, their land size may be a little different, their, their, their structures may be a little different. But I think in all, we're probably seeing some of the same trends, whether it be in EAVs, property sales, sales tax. And I'm assuming that we're fairly consistent with the other entities on there. But it would just help me have a little, have a little bit more understanding of maybe if there's some idiosyncrasies that happen within the city. You know, maybe our, our sales trends are not as elastic as maybe some other areas, but that would help us out as well. So, those three things would be great. And again, much appreciated for the work. It's very commendable how you and the staff are able to turn this around so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other lights right now, so while we're waiting on those, I have a couple of questions. On page, in the capital budget, or the cap, the community investment plan, page 45, under, it's the third section down, starts with California Lindale Wall. About halfway down, there's a Public Works Building expenditure for $2 million. I don't know if that's the manager or Director Reese?
I will defer to Director Reese to talk about, about the Dries Lane facility.
So, that was, in 2012, Public Works, it used to be before the staff reduction, and in 2012, we were located at Dries Lane Facility and in City Hall, the entire third floor of, of City Hall. And when we went through the reduction, then we merged operations with administration and engineering, and we all moved out to the, the Dries Lane Facility. And we, it's really, was never meant to house as many office staff as it has currently. And so, with the stormwater utility, that was just trying to figure out a way to re, remodel it basically, to adequately staff that, all the office staff that's out there.
Not knowing exactly what that entails, when you talk about a remodeling and so on, if there's, if there's a way to squeeze that down, considering this budget that we're looking at, I, again, I'm not necessarily second guessing what you're trying to put in there, but $2 million on a remodeling would be a spot that I would try to look at. So, if you can just get me some more information or get the council some more information on that one, and if there's, if there's a way we can trim that down. On same area, community investment, Mr. Manager, on page 44, near the bottom, water company purchase, $400,000, that's for...
We, we included $400,000 to perform some of the due diligence work for the water company buyout, so we included that in as part of the capital budget for this year.
Okay. So, as we move this towards the next step, I would advise that we eliminate that line item. I don't see $400,000 in the budget for doing exploratory work when we're fighting off an $8 million deficit. And we, we can get that to the point where we can vote on it, but I think that that's an item that we need to, to talk about. I have a couple more here, but we've got some lights in the meantime, so I'll hold off and go to Councilmember Montalongo and then Grab.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd too like to thank the staff for all the work that they put in on this project. First of all, I just want, for the record, to say that I think closing any firehouse in, in the city of Peoria is a really bad idea. I think for, the main purpose of our government is to protect our people, and fire is, firehouses provide us that avenue to take care of our people. So, I think that's a really bad idea. I think we need to come up with some other solutions. Concerning the stormwater utility, and certainly the CSO is something that we're gonna have to tackle. And I think what makes it difficult for people to try and understand is, we're combining the CSO and the stormwater runoff together, which makes it difficult for people to try and understand, not to mention the, the calculation as well. If we could put that calculation on the city website so people can try and do this calculation, so they know about what that amount is gonna be, you mentioned somewhere in the neighborhood of $13 on average per household. Is that, is that correct?
What we're proposing in this budget is an average of $8 a household, is what the bill would work out to be. But we, we definitely can put it out on the website, how we come up with that.
Gotcha. So, that, yeah, that would, that would be really helpful for, for everyone. And I think before, and Councilman Rigganbach had brought this up, the, the list of 400 projects that we have, if we could also get a little bit of a description of what those are, dates that they've, I guess, been problems for us, and a location where those, those projects are at, that would be certainly helpful. And if there's a dollar amount that is assigned to those, that would be helpful. I guess my other question is, concerning the stormwater, is, is there some action, before we go to raising taxes and fees on, on, on the people, is there some actions that businesses and residents can take to help alleviate that problem, because it's usually coming from somebody's property? And, you know, I'm also thinking here of these 400 projects, you know, once we get through these projects, does that eliminate the, the issues that we have? And I know we do have water issues that go on, or runoff water issues that go on throughout, throughout the city. I have to say, that's probably not one of the big ones that I, I get reports on as a, a major issue for, for my district. So, that's the report back that, that I'd like to see on that. And then just to talk a little bit more about the combined sewer overflow, and that gets right back to, you know, what can the people do, businesses do, to help alleviate that issue? I think, and I know at some point here, we're gonna be having a meeting with, I believe, EPA. I mean, what is their response back to us if we close off, is it 12 overflows that we have in the river?
We have 16 locations that are active overflow locations. We have four that could, but we have 20 overflow locations, but 16 of them are active, and they overflow anywhere from 20 to 50 times a year.
Sure. So, I mean, what would their response be, that we seal these 16 off? And that's what we're, we're after, right? We're after to stop polluting the river, and that's what they want us to do, that's what we want to do as well. So, that should be our, our end game. I know we're gonna get backup issues somewhere if that happens.
Yeah, I, I would tend to never recommend closing them off completely, because it's, if you close them off and you have a torrential downpour, or the 500-year storm, then you're backing up water into people's basements if the outfalls are actually closed off. So, and that's how we have, we have 20 of them that are permitted right now, but only 16 we've ever seen overflows out of. But those other four aren't closed off, the pipe's still open into the river, just as an emergency relief valve, basically. But with, the CSO policy that is out of the Clean Water Act, that was adopted in 1972, states that you're allowed four overflows in a typical year. That is the standard in the CSO policy that, that is adopted by the federal government. by the federal government. Where we are at today is, we have been, and this is one reason that negotiations have taken as long as they have, is we have constantly been pushed in a direction from the federal government to eliminate all overflows for a 10-year level, a 10-year storm. So typical year storm is the storm that happens once a year. A 10-year storm is one that happens every 10 years, so it's a less frequent storm, which is a higher level of control. And so that's what their ultimate goal is for us, is to have zero for the 10-year storm.
So, you know, coming right back to, you know, what can residents do, what can businesses do to capture runoff water? And really, that should be a policy issue before we start raising taxes and fees. That should be one of them. If that can help eliminate the problem that we have, that should be something that should happen first before jumping to raising money. Maybe that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Grab.
Manager, we had a credit card analogy that was used a few moments ago. Our municipality is required to balance the budget each year.
That's correct.
We have cut, over the past 10 years, hundreds, hundreds of city positions.
That's correct.
Previous councils have done everything possible to operate within the confines of our revenues. Let's just get that out of the way right now. There's not been any gross irresponsibility here in this chamber, at least for the 17 budgets I've had to vote on. I haven't voted for all of them because some of them didn't have a human face. I see at least four or five positions that are going to be eliminated that probably should not be eliminated. Have a huge impact on the efficiency of this organization to meet the needs of the people. What I'm hearing, I didn't bring a stack of papers in here, but I have a stack of notes in my mind from feedbacks from people who email me, who call me, who see me, people in the neighborhoods, association meetings I attend. They think that we're very thin right now in terms of our public safety posture, and in terms of the men and women who are out there scooping the snow. We made a huge commitment to rebuild the infrastructure of the city, and many of my constituents do not want to see us go back to where we were when we made the huge draconian cuts after the Great Recession hit. We cut dozens of police officers, just for starters. Got to the point where the then First District Councilman, there were so many problems there, requested a dusted-on curfew for his district, and asked for the National Guard to come in. Did we really advance the pocketbook interests of the citizens of this city when we did that, or when we cut the devil out of building inspections, code enforcement, or let our streets rot and decay, costing our citizens much more later to repair? And, Manager, you and I have had these discussions, so I'm not lecturing you, but you and I have had this vigorous discussion. So I just think during our budget deliberations, some things need to be properly framed. Hence the reason for my comments now. I can tell all of you what I've been hearing, and I'll bet you heard it, too. In the wake of the Caterpillar situation, everywhere we go, we all hear, what can we do to revitalize the employment situation for our city, all parts of the city? Think of all the emails we got about Amazon. Could they possibly come to Peoria? I didn't mind getting those emails, but I think the more realistic scenario is, we create a really strong, hard-charging economic development department. Somebody's on the road all the time, and not just looking for big corporate giants to come here, but a lot of small businesses to come here. At one point in time, you know, we did have, I believe, a full-time economic development director, and Mayor Artis, you were at large then, and I was, too. And somewhere along the road, that we just lost that, and we didn't have some of the vicissitudes that have visited this city since the Caterpillar announcement. I would love to see you restructure your administrative department, to make that a top priority, to recruit small business to come here, big business, too. But let's be realistic, two-thirds of all jobs in this community flow from small business. And that would be my charge to you. I really feel in good conscience that we have been good stewards, and that we have been cutting and cutting and cutting to make certain we can balance the budget. That we've been trying to pay the people in the bargaining units what's reasonable with public safety, and we have interest arbitration, et cetera. But I would really like to see a budget come back with a strong emphasis on recruiting more small businesses to Peoria, because this is a great community. This is a great community, and we have a lot going for ourselves. My goodness, talk about Caterpillar all we want to, but we've become a medical Mecca. We have the science lab, which, thank goodness, isn't going to be closed, at least for now, that threat appears to be gone. We've got a lot of great things going, a lot of PhDs in this community. We need somebody to go out there and tell the story about Peoria. I'm proud of this city, and I'll apologize to no one about this community. People come here and they say, and you know, sometimes I think we're our own worst enemy. We have lived in this community for so many years. We're like Pogo. We've met the enemy, and it is us. They come here and they say, this is a great community. Young people are excited to be here. We recently had a Moss Bradley meeting. We had a wonderful presentation about Yakew, and all the millennials who are excited to do things, not only here, but down in the Warehouse District. A lot of energy coming back to the heart of our city. So I would like you to, you know, blend that into your calculations as much as you can. I also had a very candid conversation with you about whether we have too many Indians, you Indians, and too many chiefs. Is there a place in your administra-- I'm not asking to answer now. Can we cut, I'm hearing from some of our employees, but they may not be totally conversant with some of the things that your administrative retinue does, are there areas in the departments where we can make some cuts? Maybe we have somebody who's going to retire in a department, maybe we don't need that position again. So I think what I'm hearing from our employees, certainly, and they're out there every day, pretty soon the yellow trucks will be out there trying to chase the snow, is shared sacrifice. And I think we need to look very closely in all the departments to see if there, we might be a little top-heavy there. Those are some of the thoughts that I have tonight, Mayor, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Regal.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Montalongo, great questions on CSO. Just brought up one final question for City Manager Eric. Will the Greater Peoria Sanitation District, when we're sort of looking at the cost of those, are we looking at a cost sharing there? Are they going to be sharing part of the responsibility?
We are continuing the dialogue with the sanitary district, particularly since the space that the sewage of Peoria Heights and West Peoria takes up space in the riverfront interceptor that causes some of those overflows. So I think that, yes, we'll continue to look at that and see what we can do to have that conversation with them.
Not seeing any lights here, so I'll get another couple of questions in, and a couple of comments, really. And I didn't get a chance to totally view the most recent report backs that came today, but there was some discussion on the special events fees and what our recommendations are going to be for that. Was that included in this, or can we have that for our next meeting?
I think that we sent, the special event fee information was sent out to you email this afternoon, if I remember correctly. Five o'clock.
Okay, that's why I haven't seen it.
This evening, it was sent to you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, I mean, we discussed that last week, and I want to make sure that, I know in several meetings that I've had since then, I've been telling people that we don't know what it's going to be, but there is going to be some type of compensation for the city services that are used for a wide variety of events in our, in our community. This one is on, let me see what page it was, of your PowerPoint presentation. It was the slide on the position changes. I think one that, you know, I'm very sensitive to, and I haven't mentioned it, but I think it's important that as we pull stuff that was recommended back, we need to think about how we're going to compensate for that, because there's a number associated with that. So I don't have that in mind, but what I want us to really think about here on the position changes is the HR position. You know, we've been doing an incredible amount of work the last four or five years in, you know, DBE and other areas, what we're doing with cadet programs and explorer programs and police and fire and so on. I'm not saying we should take it out, I'm saying we need to think more about the impact that could have on the organization. Okay? And this is more of a comment, and I really appreciate Councilmember Grab's very measured thoughts this evening, which comes after going through a lot of difficult budgets. But I think one of the things that we really have to, you know, as we're out talking to people in the community about the situation that we're in, even back, you know, when we had those pretty significant cuts, specifically in public safety, you know, they're not easy decisions to make, obviously. And, but they all have price tags associated with them. And one of the things that we have to be very cognizant of is the service level expectations that our community has, and help them understand what that service level expectation costs. There's a cost to it. So, you know, when your house is on fire, or when, you know, somebody may be trying to break into your garage, it's pretty important that response gets there pretty quickly. And we don't want to, none of the decisions that we make want to impact our response to a fire or to, you know, a public safety emergency. Though I don't think, regardless of what decisions we make, we should expect our citizens to think that that level is going to change. That has to stay quickly. But then there's other situations. If, you know, your neighbor's dog's barking and it's driving you crazy, but it might not be at the top of the list of the things that our police officer is going to respond to. Or if there's a situation, and I think somebody used the example of, you know, someone that fell out of bed, is that, I mean, is that really a core responsibility of our public safety folks? And those are the kinds of conversations that we just, we just need to have more of. And if, and, okay, so we're doing it now, if we don't do it, who's going to do it? Okay? I mean, we had these conversations years ago when we had animal control in the city of Peoria. And the final decision was is that, you know, the state doesn't require municipalities to take care of animal welfare. And so we shed it. So if there's another appropriate entity that needs to pick up that, maybe the nursing homes need to hire an extra person to help lift people. I don't know what the answer is. My point on this is that service level expectation, and regardless of what we want it to be, it's probably going to be not quite what it used to be outside of an emergency situation. I think that's fair to say, but we need to educate the public on that. So that just brings us around to the part of your report that was on page in the binder, page 22. And I bring this, I bring this up not because I want to dive into it, because there's a lot of information here tonight, but this really speaks to one of the issues that we really have to understand what the ramifications are going to be, service levels, for a lot of the calls that currently are, our fire department goes on. And it goes on into page 23, which actually gets more specific into what these numbers of calls for emergency response are in a year. And they're significant. They're 12,000 a year. There's a lot of calls. But are these, you know, all calls that we expect us to place extreme amount of emphasis on, and extreme, extreme cost to respond to them for, for the price that's out there? So I think that's something that, Mr. Manager, we have to bring more into the discussion so, so people understand that that's, you know, that's what we're really talking about here. And it, you know, the recommendation as it stands right now isn't to close a firehouse, it's to, it's to decommission an engine. So in your recommendation, along with whatever, the input from the chief and his staff in terms of what station would be, have the least impact on the rest of the community is what we have to consider. So, at least as of right now, that's it for my comments. Council, I'm not seeing any additional lights right now. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring this up. A business registration fee, in the past, when I had our office located in, outside Chicago at one point, one of the things that was required was for our business to fill out some paperwork and sign up with the city, so the city would know a little bit about our business, understand what needs we might have. And I thought, actually, that was kind of neat, coming into a new area and then being contacted by the city, and they wanted to know something about my business, as well as I had some communication with them by email as well. I've not had the chance to talk with the Chamber of Commerce to see what their thoughts are on this, but I think it's worthy of having some discussion. So I think of all the positive things that it can, it can do for the city, that if we know more about the businesses here in town, what can we do to help them grow their businesses? How can we help sell Peoria to the regional area? How can we help their businesses grow, whether it's through training, et cetera? But I think some kind of communication needs to open up. I know on our side, we'll, we need to administer some of that, and it could help with planning for roads, fire, police, et cetera. And I'd like for our city manager to take, take a look into this and provide some kind of report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager's staff this evening? So we have two weeks before our next budget discussion. A lot of additional information requested this evening, so I'll get you, Councilman Grab. I just want to finish the thought processes after the discussion this evening, whenever that is, and if you, if you come across something else with the information that we received, you know, later on today that we might not have had a chance to see or anything else, make sure you get those questions to the manager and staff so they can be included in our next, in our next budget session. And at that time, you'll have a schedule for us of how we will proceed to, hopefully to the passing the budget for-- for us of how we will proceed to, hopefully to pass in the budget for 1819.
Yes, we will. We'll have that scheduled for you.
Okay. Councilmember Grab?
Mayor and manager, I'll be real quick on this. The innovation team, the work they're doing is huge. It is huge. And that can help us grow the economic pie. You know, somehow we have to dispel the notion that we have a pie that cannot grow in this community. And their work is just, and the briefings that I've gotten from the team, I just want you to know how much I appreciate it, and I think they're putting Peoria on the right track, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well said. I'm not seeing any additional lights for questions. So, Mr. Manager, were you going to say something? I was just going to say, we're inviting everyone to add additional information.
If there are additional questions that council has, please email them to us. We'll document them in the fashion that we've been documenting the report backs now. We're going to take all the information from the budget report backs, the presentation this evening, the financial tables, and we'll have everything posted tomorrow out on the web, so we'll get all that stuff loaded up, so that the public can see it as well.
Is all the information and all the report backs that we've seen up to tonight available on the web?
I don't believe that that's out on the web yet, but we'll make sure that it's out there tomorrow forever.
So for listening public or watching public, all the documents that we've received up to this point will be put up on the web tomorrow. So everyone can, as transparent as we can possibly be, up to date. There's more information that's requested that'll come up when it's available. Okay. I would like to, we have, just, oh, Councilmember Moore, sorry.
That's all right. I do want to, I would like for the city manager to look at one last item, to bring back the next time. And that goes to the mayor's question about the cost, the events. And if you turn to page 10 in your binder, in the second paragraph on that page, it's in the 2018-2019 Budget Transmittal Letter, page 10, the second paragraph shows the information the mayor was asking about as far as a potential fee for service, for events and the like. You will find about fifth line down that it indicates that the city should generate about $200,000 annually in imposing such a fee. However, if you refer to Assistant City Manager Cetti's Budget Report Number Three, which he has came to us late today, for me, now you may not have had an opportunity to look at it. When you're home on medical, that's all you have to do is read, so I did look at that. And it indicates that the cost has been upwards of $385,000. And so, Mr. Manager, if you could look at how we can close that cost versus what the potential revenue would be, and report that back to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moore. I'm not seeing any more lights. What I wanted to do was make sure and tell staff, who it looks like all of our staff is here with us this evening, we appreciate that. We know that on top of the other daily work that you're doing, all this requested information just adds more to the pile, but we appreciate the fact that everyone's here, everybody's trying to help us be in the best situation we can be as a city, with the least amount of pain as possible. We definitely don't want to delay some of the angst that is out there, and where some of these positions are, but we want you to know, we appreciate your input and your help, and we appreciate that everybody wants to get through this with as least amount of pain as possible. So on behalf of the council, thank you all for attending again this evening. Seeing no further lights, we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilman Euler. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously, and this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, we're going to send it out tomorrow for everybody.